Good evening and welcome to the November 27, 2023 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have three topics for discussion, and we're looking forward to doing business tonight. But I do want to say I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving and welcome. And we will start with our Environmental Affairs Committee. And let me just see, Jeanette and Michael, Jeanette Rosenbaum and Michael Wiant, will come and present to us. So I should have had you guys sit right at the table from the beginning.
Well, we thought public comment was first.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jeanette Rosenbaum, the Chair of the Environmental Affairs Committee, and this is our annual briefing. As a quick recap, the mission of the Environmental Affairs Committee, or EAC, is to advise the Mayor and Council on environmental issues, promote environmental education and outreach activities, monitor county, state, and federal regulations for environmental impacts on city operations, explore new environmental initiatives, and support the city's Green Month celebration and programs related to green building, climate protection, pollution prevention, and watershed protection. Our mission supports the city's environment strategic direction to meet the needs of the city in a manner that accurately reflects the community's desire for environmental health and economic prosperity without compromising the ability of future generations to meet those same needs. Last year, we set a lot of goals for ourselves, including offering more engagement opportunities, continuing to host popular sustainability events, pulling off an environmental justice survey, working on the problem of excessive road salt usage, and collaborating with partner groups to protect natural resources. We also aspired to create a management plan for non-native invasive plants, bring more trash cans to neighborhoods that have a lot of littering and illegal dumping, advance the city's work on a climate action plan, and solve challenges with the Rainscapes Rewards program. We may have been a little bit overly ambitious last year, but we did make a lot of progress on many of these goals. Let's look at what the EAC accomplished in 2023. First, several of us were out tabling and presenting to engage audiences around town with the committee's initiatives. We're also continuing to work on communications materials, including an informational brochure and promotional items. Designing a calendar magnet is proving more challenging than we had anticipated. However, this year, we successfully produced a primer pamphlet that explains how the committee system works and helps all of Gaithersburg's committees onboard new members. In March, as always, we distributed awards to people and groups doing great work for the environment in Gaithersburg. This year, we celebrated 13 winners with seven achievement awards and six appreciation awards. The celebration was extra festive because we were able to hold it in person. This was actually my first in-person awards ceremony. It was great to get to meet all the winners. With the help of city staff, we also recognized the winners on social media and in newsletters. In addition to the return of popular events from pre-pandemic times, in 2023, we also continued events that had been working well in 2022. The May rendition of our shred event set a new high score of 323 cars. We served an additional 246 cars at the September event. Those two events together shredded almost 15 tons of paper. They also collected just over one ton of e-waste for recycling. In addition, event attendees brought over 1,300 pounds of food donations and almost $700 of cash gifts. Meanwhile, our two always open compost drop-off sites received 18 and a half tons of organic waste between January and August of this year. We don't have numbers yet for the fall. We're continuing to work on a third compost drop-off. And back on the subject of returning events, this year, we attempted to organize a field trip, as the EAC used to do on an annual-ish basis. We are out of practice and didn't quite manage to pull it off, but we will keep trying. Our plan is to go on a boat tour of the Anacostia River. Coordinating everyone's schedule has been a challenge. But following our extremely successful Fix-It Fair in 2022, we did another one in 2023. Despite limited advertising due to staffing shortages, the Fix-It Fair filled 98% of its time slots in two weeks. We also had quite a few walk-ins. This year, we offered some different types of fixes, and attendees brought us some puzzling challenges. Our volunteer fixers successfully diagnosed almost 100% of the problems, but due to the complexity of the problems, we only had a 2/3 rate of on-the-spot fixes. Items we did fix included an antique clock, an outdoor heating lamp, and one of those small cars that children drive. The community appreciates this service so much that this year, we had a number of attendees from surrounding towns that don't yet have their own Fix-It Fair. The volunteer fixers enjoy it too, as shown by the fact that several of this year's fixers were returning from last year. Also taking Gaithersburg by storm, the Environmental Justice Survey, which launched in February, surpassed its response goal in four weeks, and went on to become the most popular survey in town. Versions of the survey in Spanish and Chinese, as well as strategic outreach to the more diverse neighborhoods, helped us get responses that are representative of our city. In the survey, we explained environmental justice by saying, "Everyone deserves access to clean air, water, and land." In the coming year, we'll be working to make that reality by analyzing the survey results and taking action based on what we learn. Our off-trail team was out and about this year, making interesting discoveries in the less often seen corners of our city parks, topping the list of what they find: invasive plants, bank erosion, and trash. But our alert volunteers also observed beaver activity and reported a massive sinkhole caused by a pipe collapse, as shown in these photos. City staff can't be everywhere, so our off-trail team is providing more eyes to monitor what's happening on our public lands. The team met with Public Works in March to coordinate a plan for reporting and resolving problems in parks. The EAC continues to serve as the green team for the Sustainable Maryland Action Plan. You can see here the many projects staff worked on related to that action plan. Thanks to the efforts of everyone involved in this initiative, Gaithersburg continues to hold a silver-level certification as a sustainable Maryland city. We are still waiting for the program to create the gold-level criteria. We look forward to wildly surpassing all those requirements. That covers most of our goals for 2023. Some of the remaining objectives proved more challenging. We are still working on the thorny problem of road salt, and we expect to bring more recommendations in the coming year. We understand that adding more trash cans can sometimes cause more illegal dumping, and we're thinking about alternative solutions. Like everyone else, we are overwhelmed by the scale of the invasive plant challenge, and we are looking for realistic ways to begin tackling this. We're currently working on a memo that seeks to address the ongoing spread of invasive plants by slowing down the rate at which invasive are deliberately introduced to our community. We know that Gaithersburg is already working on a climate action plan, but the initiative is waiting on funding and struggling with insufficient staffing. Given the escalating urgency of the climate crisis, we sure hope these roadblocks will be resolved in the coming year. Similarly, we learned that Rockville and Montgomery County are beating us on the effectiveness of their Rainscapes Rewards programs because they have dedicated staff for that, and we do not. We would love to see Gaithersburg commit more resources to back up the successful concept. Who are the people backing up all this amazing work by the Environmental Affairs Committee? Mostly, it's our staff liaisons. The committee members are full of great ideas, but our staff are the ones who make things happen. We were very sorry to lose Deb Maran in the spring, and we are immensely grateful for the ongoing efforts of Michael Wiant. After having full, stable membership for most of the year, we suddenly lost three of our members in September: Alex Stavitsky-Zanadin and Catherine Ryder, who were the most tenured members of our committee, and Chloe Malouf, who was our vice chair. We appreciate all their contributions and wish them well in their new endeavors. In 2024, we plan to continue building on our successful initiatives of the past several years. As just mentioned, creating and implementing a Gaithersburg Climate Action Plan is a very high priority for us. We are also eagerly awaiting the release of a higher level of Sustainable Maryland certification so we can promptly earn that upgrade. Forest and tree protection is very much on our minds right now. We expect to deliver recommendations on that in the coming months. Developing an actionable plan for managing non-native invasive plants is a longer-term project that we will be working on this next year. With a couple of very successful Fix-It Fairs under our belts, we're aiming to pull off two of them in 2024. We will continue to work on recommendations for smarter salting and will have new ways for people to engage with environmental action in Gaithersburg. As mentioned earlier, we currently have six members and three open seats. We will continue to hold our meetings virtually in the coming year, and we welcome virtual public comment. We invite all members of the community to attend any of our meetings and join the conversation. Or if you'd like to attend all of our meetings, instructions for applying can be found on the city website. We thank the Mayor and Council for their support, and we look forward to continuing to work with them in 2024. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jeanette, and thank you, Michael. Nancy, do you want to come to the podium real quick and just introduce yourself to the public here? Yes, perfect.
Yes, yes, I'd like to introduce myself. I am Nancy Shum. I'm the new Environmental Services Division Chief for the City of Gaithersburg, and I'm looking forward to making great strides in environmental improvement and work closely with the EAC to make sure that we get the message out to the community on best management practices and ways that we can really improve and achieve and sustain our environment for the coming generations.
Excellent, thank you, thank you very much.
Nancy's also a Buckeye, I may add.
So two heartbroken people in the room tonight. For all you Michigan fans, don't gloat around here. So I guess I want to put a challenge out to the council here, and myself as well, to help try to recruit some new members on the Environmental Affairs Committee, given that we've had these resignations.
You have one application in your agenda packet this evening.
Excellent, excellent. So I want to also follow up on the Sustainable Maryland, the odd way that they've rolled out this certification in that each year, or at least, or they're gradually rolling out the criteria for the different levels, right? And so we were bronze for some time when that was the highest you could be, and now we're silver, and that's the highest that you can be, and we have achieved it. So it's kind of awkward to explain that to people. I'm not trying to be, you know, to brag or anything like that. Like, I just want to, I want to make sure, like, when you say that we're, when anybody says, "Oh, we were silver-level Sustainable Maryland certification," they're like, "Well, why aren't you gold or platinum?" And that's the natural question. We will, we plan to be. Anyway, this is a perfect example of why we have committees in the first place. Everybody up here, for as long, I've now been here 16 years, not always mayor, but seven years as council and nine years as mayor. And everybody serving up here has always been interested in being a good environmental steward, and beyond that, being a leader in this area. But we all, like, we work part-time and at the city, and, you know, some of us have natural expertise, but not all of us do. Not all of our day jobs, you know, are involved in environmental policy. So we rely on the committee a great deal to look into these big subjects like stormwater and streams, and recycling, and composting, and waste management, and energy usage, and dealing with pesticides and invasive species, and trees, and reforestation, like, best practices. We don't have, there's only so many hours in the day to look all this stuff up. So the feedback and the suggestions, the recommendations that we get from this committee have been very, very valuable over all this time, and they will continue to be. It doesn't mean the council is going to agree on every single thing, because, you know, we have to balance the recommendations and suggestions against other priorities that we have in the city. Occasionally, there are competing priorities on things. But most often, we have, and, you know, I can't speak for Montgomery County and Rockville beating us on the Rainscapes Rewards in terms of participation. You know, I guess we can do better, we can do better at that. We want to beat them, obviously, as a percentage of our population. But we've been on the cutting edge. We have been, and I think it's a point of pride. So thank you, continue doing the good work. Carl, I see you in the audience, I want to thank you too for being here and all. And whoever else is remaining on the committee, I want to express our gratitude. Does anybody else want to ask a question or make a statement? Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'd love hearing about the environment and the increasing work that you guys do to make sure that Gaithersburg continues to grow environmentally and aesthetically, still look amazing. So thank you, thank you for your work. One of the questions I have is regarding the survey. When you did multiple languages, do you know, and it can be a good guess, I'm not sure if you have the numbers, of what percentage was non-English in terms of?
The percentage of responses?
Responses.
Do you know?
It was less than 10%, I believe, for non-English.
Okay, okay, thank you.
But less than 10% is still pretty high compared to the other surveys that we put out there. So we've definitely seen an improvement, but we still have some more work to do out of this.
Okay, thank you. I'm just curious to know from a standpoint of if we put multi-language out, are we still getting mostly English in response? Also, I wanted to say thank you for recognizing that putting out additional trash cans may increase dumping. So thank you for recognizing that and continue to look for a solution that works for everybody. Thank you.
Jamil, then Jim.
Oh, I just noticed that the county had their Climate Action Program, or Climate Action Plan briefing today. I didn't get a chance to see it, to the extent you did. If there's anything there that you think, you know, would be helpful to learn or hear about would be great. It's like three hours long.
But I didn't watch it either. I was involved in the creation of that plan. If you want to talk to me sometime about the history of it, but no, they didn't invite me to the briefing.
Oh, their loss, our gain.
I know.
Those county people, I tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeanette, thank you, Michael, thank you. Nancy, welcome, and congratulations to the committee. I chuckle when you say you think you bit off more than you can chew, but I love that. I love the passion that this committee has. It reminded me, there's a new YouTube song out called Atomic City, and there's a line that jumped out to me that says, "If your dreams don't scare you, they're not big enough." So I love the fact that you're really pushing yourselves to try to do as much as you can. I love the fact that three tons of waste came out of the shredding events between the paper and the e-waste. And not only is that good for the environment, it's a great way for avoiding identity theft. What's that?
Fifteen tons of paper, one ton of e-waste.
See, I broke down one and two, so thank you, fifteen. So that's incredible. And it's a great way to protect against identity theft as well. And congratulations to the off-trail team. You're absolutely right. City staff, council members, we can't be everywhere. And we say this with a lot of different issues, environment being one of them, is, you know, if you see something, say something. And that applies to issues that affect the environment as well. So great job by them and appreciate that great work. There's been a lot of discussion of invasive species over the past couple of months. And, you know, when I drive to Virginia and I see kudzu everywhere along the highways, like, that's certainly something we do not want here in Gaithersburg. And I'm really curious, why my pen is jumping out of my hands? I'm really curious to see with regard to salt this year, and we've gotten off easy the past couple winters. From all accounts, from all of the meteorologists in town, it sounds like we're actually going to have an actual winter this year. So look forward to seeing how well we do and looking for opportunities for us to improve. I think we all, to this day, recognize the impacts that that has. Carl's been a really important advocate for, you know, making us aware of where we're doing well and where we can do better. So all in all, really no questions, just want to say thank you to everybody for all the good work and keep it up.
Thanks, Jim, we'll go to Neil.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. I mean, the committee has been doing great work for years, and I'm glad to see that the energy is still there as you go forward. You've lost some heavy hitters from your committee, so hopefully we'll all...
We lost everyone who was on the committee when I joined.
Yeah. I'm aware of the fact that they've all been long-term members, and they've all been active people, as are all of you. So hopefully, we'll be able to help you and recruit some more green people to help you out. And I'm also glad to see, I wasn't able to make it this year, but to see that the awards ceremony was back in person. I had the privilege of representing the Kettelins for an award that we got about 10 years ago for some work we did, I believe it was for the geothermal project at the Kettelins Clubhouse. I'm sorry that Kettelins hasn't been represented since in recent years, so I'm going to have to...
Can you dominate yourself?
Well, not my job. But I will push those folks to, because I know they're still doing good work over there. Maybe we just need to get the word out again. There's been a lot of turnover there as well. And I'll tell you, you scared me a little bit when you were talking about shredding in cars. I was afraid you were shredding cars, but I was glad to hear that you were shredding automobiles instead, I mean, paper instead, which is good. But seriously, on the Fix-It, you're planning to do two events next year. Do you have any idea when in the calendar that those will be?
Well, last year, we tried committing to dates, and the book fair ran us over, so we're not making that decision.
Yeah, they're tough, the book fair.
Yeah, we lost that one.
Yeah, I mean, knowing staff, just to make a quick recommendation, I'm way out of turn here, but the months of the year when we don't have a lot of other events are probably the best places to aim when the weather is not so good. So just as a quick suggestion.
Previously, there'd been an idea of doing it shortly before the shred event, so anything that can't be repaired can be brought to the e-waste recycling, so that there's a place for it to go.
So speaking of e-waste, I know my, we just upgraded my wife to a new computer, and I had to figure out what to do with her old hard drive. So there's probably a lot of hard drives with data that people haven't figured out what to do. So that may be a point that you can build up the, people shredding their, getting their e-waste shredded. So get rid of that important data. She's got HIPAA data on her, so it's actually really important. All right, anyway, thank you for the good work, keep it up.
All right, so I wanted to put it out there, if there's anybody here who would like to come to the podium and testify on this. Carl, you seem like you'd like to. And then I will check on our Zoom audience.
Thank you, I'm Carl Van Ness. I live at 52 Redding Ridge Drive in Gaithersburg. I'm a member of your EAC and the Muddy Branch Alliance. Thank you for making time for me today. Wanted to talk about two things: salt and stormwater drains. For salt, the Muddy Branch Alliance is continuing to monitor our streams this year. Chloride levels under Great Seneca Highway average over 100 parts per million. An ideal thing would be about 25 parts per million. After a snowstorm, we typically have toxic levels in our streams for about a quarter of the year. WSAC has reported that chloride levels have been rising constantly over the last, you know, 15, 20 years. Your team does a good job with salt, but we can do better. To be safe, major intersections, emergency routes, and key areas must be plowed and salted. But we must be prudent with salt. It's a pollutant, and it's a corrosive. Don't salt parks during a snow emergency. Don't salt my flat dead ends. Cone off empty parking lots, dead-end sidewalks, and parks during a snow emergency. After all, it's a snow emergency. Use sand where possible. Your fellow, Mark Scafidi, is doing a great job, and I appreciate working with him. Now to stormwater. Stormwater drains in the Sabrebrook apartment have grills over the drains. We need to look at applying grills over, say, 20 to 30% of our drains, such that only water is able to enter the stormwater system. Right now, water bottles, beer cans, balls litter our streams, ponds, and water sheds. Have you taken a look at Lake Veruna recently? The southwest corner is a mess. Your team thinks this is largely because of drainage issues associated with the Kettelins Square. I'm not saying all stormwater drains need to be covered, because we don't want flooding, but clearly, some percentage, like 20 to 30%, could have grills, keeping garbage out of our water supply. And yes, it will mean that we'll need to make sure that the drains are kept clear. But we do that anyway, right? Let's not let our streams become a refuge for storm drain garbage. Thank you, happy holidays.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else on this topic? Let me check and see. Tech team, I cannot see who is on, who our participants are. Can you show me that screen, please? I'm not getting that from our tech team. All right, we're going to have to, I'm just going to move on, and we will, I'll just come back and monitor it. But tech team, if you can get up that screen where I can see who's participating and see if they have their hands raised, that would be great. All right, we're moving forward. Okay, thank you guys very much. Next, we have our briefing from Economic and Business Development Committee. And I'd like to invite Judy Costello and Tom Longigan Seager to the table to present.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening, welcome.
Speaking of those county people. So I did, this is not on our topic, but if I may, I did just share my... So, I did, this is not on our topic, but if I may, I did just share my business card with your very enthusiastic environmental committee chair and your new division chief. And I hope that they have connected with our new climate change officer, but if not, I'll make that connection. I was in meetings during that briefing, so I didn't see it either. But I did just today get, receive an email about a federal EPA grant opportunity that that will be coordinated by the county in which my understanding is regional partners can participate and there's a near-term deadline. So, I want to make sure that they and your staff know knows about that.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
Well, I am honored to be here and happy to present on behalf of a very dedicated committee of economic and development, business development leaders who've who volunteer their time through the course of the year. And I'm happy to present when you're ready. Yep, you're ready, okay.
Yep.
And actually, before Judy gets started, I I would like to just quickly say, as staff liaison for 12 years, along with Sharon Disk for the past 10 years, this current crew of committee members and prior ones, we are incredibly grateful for the vast backgrounds that they bring to this conversation each and every month. We task them with projects that are big and exciting and things that are very small and boring at times, ranging from zoning text amendments to mall redevelopments to, next month, we'll be talking about the tipped wage law that's being proposed at the county level. So, I'd like to to thank and acknowledge them. Councilmember Harris, thank you for your years of being the council liaison and, of course, our newly minted councilman for your your time on the council or in the committee. And I'd also like to thank Judy Costello, who, years prior to her joining this committee, I actually had the pleasure of working with her in multiple different places, at the Commerce, at the state level, at the MD, at BHI, which helps to bring, which helped to bring the DC region into the third place ranking as the third biggest biotech cluster in the region. And so, we're lucky to have her on this team here, so I need to pull you off your.
No problem.
But thank you for that.
No, thank you, and I and I represent this esteemed group you see listed here. I'm just one of many people who've participated for a long time. And as Tom noted, no matter what the topic is each month, when this group meets typically at 8:00 or 8:30 on a Friday, and as Councilmembers Harrison Hernandez can attest, there's usually a lively discussion. It sometimes has to, we have to end it so everybody can get back to the day jobs. So, the committee focus on business and economic development has been running with the guiding principles that to have the services that we all want to have in the city of Gaithersburg for residents and businesses, you need a strong, growing, and sustainable tax base. And with that, as underlying principle, most of the topics are tied to recruitment and retention of business and and how we can best interact with the other partners, the developers. There've been conversations about signs, mall redevelopment, gas station, food. It's all about bringing vibrancy to the business community in the city and how we can ensure that businesses are growing in a way that makes the quality of life in Gaithersburg that which everyone here knows and gets to enjoy. So, as you all know, the the city has lots of strengths and some challenges. When we're talking about businesses retaining them in the city or attracting them, we talk about things like our highly educated workforce, our location near the nation's capital and with in a half-day's distance of the rest of the country. And overseas, our public transit, local incentives, the zoning, with some things not on this list that also come up are your staff and their responsiveness on any issues that raise, including those that were just discussed. And the environment, the diversity of the community is an attraction and a retention, a key factor in business attraction and retention. And the the K through 12, the strength of the system and the schools is part of what contributes to the highly educated workforce listed above. The challenges, and we spent some time on this during the year, that the changing economy has meant a drastic drop in the demand for office space. You know, we're a bit landlocked and the Mattens are among those who've filled in the last of the infillable land. So, there's a lot of discussion also about what can happen within the remaining properties, how you focus on on Old Town, the Frederick Avenue corridor, and the older office properties, and maintaining guidelines that the cities, residents, and businesses and you have all valued to be important, including preserving the historic nature of of Old Town Gaithersburg and ensuring that workforce has an affordable place to live. So, during the course of the year, which kind of flew by, I think for all of us, we had a number of different topics in our meetings. Mr. Lonergan and Ms. Disk did come to us in one of our meetings to to ask for recommendations on text amendments with a specific issue or or two that I think you are aware of that that brought the issue of ZTAs to the table. Should we be issuing zoning text amendments when a complete rewrite, for the purposes of updating, your global zoning code is underway? And there was a lot of animated discussion about the particular issues. The request that we, that was brought to us by staff was, what about the process? And the decision or the recommendation was made, hey, don't do one-offs on ZTAs when you have capable staff that are looking holistically at that the zoning code from A to Z incorporate potential changes into the rewrite. Not, that was one of our meetings, the topic of one of our meetings. Earlier this year, that another meeting, we had the annual breakfast over at the Kettlins where Josh Kurtz with Maryland Matters spoke pretty candidly about life in Annapolis. And I know most of you were there, but that was a good presentation and he and the and other attendees took questions, which I can always find a Q and A there to be informative. We had a discussion of some of the ongoing projects. I think we already mentioned Walnut Hill, the $200,000 State of Maryland grant for the redesign of Russell Avenue. There was an entire separate meeting on the topic of aging office buildings that examined the trends that are not just here in the city and the county, but nationwide with the return to work, remote work, and the change of patterns of work, meaning that there's a large vacancy in office space. And it was a wide-ranging discussion, including can you convert office space to housing? Can it be made for light manufacturing? And those of you in front of me are probably aware that that not every office space has the, even if it's zone where it could be residential, has the the guts and the core components that make it readily convertible to housing. That's a question that has came up not only in our committee, but comes up frequently in the county. And it's not to dwell in the details that you see that there can be some office-to-housing conversions, but it's it's not a quick fix or an easy answer to fill office space with the much-needed affordable housing. So, that that meeting was primarily a discussion of of that wide range of possibilities. The, we did have a dis, a presentation from Lynn Benzion Stein at Montgomery County Economic Development Corporation about their Equity Action Plan. I actually had a conflict with that meeting, was not able to attend, but understand, I have seen the report and understand the meeting was largely a discussion of MCEDC's activities related to their, how they've included equity in economic development initiatives and their recognition by the International Economic Development Corporation, IEDC, as one of the first economic development groups in the country to focus on equity. So, that's a summary of the of the many different meetings that we had during the course of the year. The majority of the attendees I showed you earlier had participated in all of them. There was one other session that we had where we invited NIST to present to the committee. Mojda Bahar, who is part of the Innovation Office at NIST and works with Tech Transfer, spoke to the committee, who was very interested in knowing how can we leverage NIST for, just for business development in the city. And there weren't any quick fixes or easy answers, but it was a very friendly meeting in that NIST welcomes inquiries from businesses and residents in the city who are interested in working with them on specific projects where they routinely have an opportunity for public engagement. I wanted to note that, even though it's not in your deck. Going forward, the priorities that that we've been given from staff and that resonate with the committee include the ever-popular Lake Forest Mall redevelopment discussions, opportunities to look at redevelopment along the 355 corridor, changes and opportunities in Old Town in terms of Old Town revitalization. What can we do to support the local biotech and innovation economy? And what can we do to make sure that as office space becomes vacant and tenants seek Class A space that we aren't left with a way, way too much Class B and C office properties? And that is the quick summary that I was asked to provide. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Judy, thank you so much for the presentation and for all your work and for and to all of your colleagues. These are important questions. These are important topics for the health of our community. Obviously, Gaithersburg is not large enough to be its own freestanding economy. We're part of the larger Montgomery County, Maryland, DC metro region, whatever, DMV economy. But it's always our intent to bat above our weight to do the work that needs to be done to support business, because, as we all know, we love the programs that we have to support people, to serve people in various ways in the city. And in the county, we've got to pay for them. And and it's economic activity and jobs that allow us to do it, and it's a critical part of the health of our community. So, and again, it's it's, these are, these are topics and trends to, you know, many of us do have some overlap in this in our day jobs. But, you know, to to look at it as holistically, it's important. So, we we really appreciate the work of this committee and hope that you'll continue to do it. Questions, comments from the council? Neil.
He was looking the other way.
There's more of them here than on this side.
I can't help it. So, yeah, speaking of punching above our weight, if we punch above my weight after Thanksgiving, we're doing great. Anyway, it's been, you know, I've really enjoyed my time on the committee, which is now, it's predates my joining the council nine years ago. So, almost as long as Tom, not quite getting there. So, this committee, the biggest challenge for this committee has been getting new, getting new members on it who want to join, because it's always full. Is it's full at the moment?
Well.
I think we we had one seat open.
One.
Is Luke Brahmi still on the committee?
Technically, and Wallace Sermon's recently.
He resigned recently.
Because he moved out of the city. So, we will be announcing at least a couple of vacancies on the committee.
So, do we have a waiting list at this point, or?
There are interested candidates out there, for sure.
I wasn't really worried, I was just curious. So, just curious also about the discussion of office conversions. As you mentioned, Judy, the converting to to housing is not always easy based on the the structure of the building. How about other uses? Are we looking at, have we, have we looked at, or is the county looking at conversion into schools? Or, I mean, we're looking for a rec center or something like that, is there any way to convert it into some of these buildings that did more useful things?
So, I've seen, I've seen discussion of schools being converted into other centers. Office buildings, I've not heard that specific discussion, though I will raise that. That's an interesting, an interesting possibility, though. But what I have heard is is light manufacturing, where you have, where you don't need the special HVAC that you need for biotech or the heavy manufacturing that you might picture in an industrial town. But but things like sensors, I'll give the the best example that, and I know we've shared with the committee, but that you all might have noticed that the few months ago, going up and down to 70, if you're heading west, there's a sign on a building near Lower Rockville that says Intellian on the top of an office building. That is a $100 million R and D investment in satellite manufacturing, all in an existing office space, not necessarily older office space. But they gutted the floor and you look, it looks like you're in a high-tech lab, like Google or something, and they're developing satellite components there that people are using in boats and airplanes. So, I think there is an opportunity for that type of manufacturing that aligns with our highly educated workforce. And then on assembly, a low-tech workforce could also do it. But I, in my role with the county, as well as with the committee, I welcome any suggestions. In my role with the county, I'm happy to take it back to to see if there's some opportunities.
The reason I I brought up schools is, it happens to be, my son is a special needs kid in Kennedy Krieger, which was in in old public schools, that is now moved. The Montgomery County campus is actually Prince George's at the moment in Beltsville, in what was an office building. And it's actually a great space for them. It's much nicer than the than the older school spaces that they used to be in. So, it seems to work for these kids. Maybe a school space is always hard to come by.
Yeah, and parking, so you you have more parking with offices, just thinking out loud. So, I mean, that, which is helpful for schools.
Yep.
Versus going to, I have not heard that discussion. I promise you, I'll take it back and give you some feedback.
And my work here is done, thank you.
Good idea.
Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Judy, thank you so much, Tom. Thank you as well, and to Sharon. Always appreciate the this committee for kind of being that sounding board when there are, you know, important issues before the city and whether it's, you know, the annexations, the redevelopments, et cetera. Obviously, Old Town and 355 corridor continue to be ongoing issues that we, I think we all wish we could wave a magic wand and and get solved. I know there's ongoing work looking at the future of of the B and C properties. But looking at this list, if there was something that isn't on here that, you know, is on your radar, that's something maybe we should be concerned about or at least keeping on our radar, is there anything, you know, whether it's macroeconomic or otherwise, that, you know, perhaps we should just make sure that as we go into our budgeting season, et cetera, that maybe we should be paying attention to, that maybe we just aren't?
I I think you're focused on it, and I don't want to put too fine a point on it, but the the B and C office property, the older retail properties, you know, where we work, where we shop is changing, which in turn could affect the value of the properties, which in turn could change our our ratables and our tax revenues. So, this is really where we need to be keeping our our eye focused on on how we can keep those properties healthy, either in their current form or in some future form. And I would add to the conversation, Councilmember Harris, about the reuse of A and B or B and C office properties, is we've had success here in the city for conversion to life science-related properties. 704 Quincentor, 700 Prince Orchard, a current property on Professional Drive, recently acquired and undergoing renovation for future life science use. This is the type of activity we need to continue. That would be my answer to your question.
I'd add, I'd add to that, that, you know, this is one of, when when there's, when there are properties that are sort of in that limbo where they're, they're not really leased out, but they're, the owners aren't ready to sell them, that's oftentimes, the art community could come in there and use the, you know, convert some space to performance space or to studios or that sort of thing. You've seen that done in places. That's, it's sort of the cycle of revitalizing a a community that often happens.
Halloween stores.
Halloween stores, you know, holiday markets, that sort of stuff. Lisa and then Jamil.
Thank you. Councilmember McNulty just put a thought in my head. I was going to be. I was going to be quiet before this. Thank you both for the presentation. The question, the thought that I now have is, so when we talk about retail and particularly in the mall space, and we, we see those disappearing for good reason, and, and people shopping more online than they, you know, they are in stores, do we see a need for storage, particularly a product? Because if, you know, if I order something online, I typically want it yesterday. So if it's coming from overseas, I'm not getting it yesterday. If it's, if it's close and local, then I'm more apt to shop from, from that particular store. So we, are we seeing, are we seeing any growth in the, in a, for people to store product locally?
You talking about self-storage or are you talking about more warehousing?
More warehouse.
We certainly understand that there's a need for that type of space. And in the right place, there it belongs. But in prime locations, you know, we want to be careful, you know, as was mentioned during the presentation, we're kind of plum out of land. And we want to ensure that development and redevelopment goes to the highest and best uses, that generates good revenues for the city and good jobs as well. But recognizing that there is a need and for that type of space, Matten's redevelopment, four hundred fifty thousand square feet there at Montgomery Village Avenue and 355, that is an allowable use in there. Some warehousing is permitted in there. So the right site, it could fit, but we're just as concerned about it going to the wrong site.
Okay.
And taking away a future possibility for something bigger and better.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Jamil.
Actually, just had two quick comments. One, preparing to arm this old, Councilmember Harris, for the committee assignment with you all.
Not happening.
But no, just to echo or piggyback on something, Councilmember Harris said, in our building, Judy, and you know 77 Upper Rock from our day job, they retrofitted.
Tetra core.
Yeah, that was a ton of work to put back, you know, life science, HVAC, power, the heights, the load bearing this. So it's, it's a tough, tough thing when the building's not originally sort of set up for the life science equipment. So it's a big of a challenge. But no, thank you for the update and look forward to more.
Thank you.
And actually, the two buildings on Professional Drive, the two life sciences companies that I'm aware, both purchased. So where, so where you have older office space, unlike your building.
Right.
It's an opportunity, a rare opportunity, I would say, for someone who wants to own the building that his or her, or their biotech company is in. One other thing we didn't talk about that's key, but that you are already all considering in response to your questions, transportation. You know, everything with, whether it's BusRec, Transit, that road, the 270 and, and a few other things. But transportation is a priority for, for all of us, and I know it is for you. I just, we just don't know.
Only we were getting a briefing on that.
All right. So is, thank you, Jamil. Is there anybody here present who'd like to make a statement, ask a question on this topic? Not seeing any? Okay. Well, let me just check on Zoom and see if, if there's any hands go, that go up. Okay. And I'm not seeing any, any hands go up. So, okay. Thank you very much. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks to my fellow committee members who.
We appreciate them very, very, very much. Okay. Next, we're going to have our annual briefing from the Transportation Committee, and Sean Emerson is going to lead the presentation, along with Brian Fields from our Public Works Department. Welcome, gentlemen.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Sean Emerson, Chair of the Transportation Committee. I'm joined here by Brian Fields, one of our excellent liaisons of city staff. And thank you for the segue from the Economic Committee there. Really set us up quite well. So our committee mission, it's been the same for, for many years, sent you to review and make recommendations to you all, the City Council, and to be informed and inform the public about any transportation trafficking issues affecting the city, explore the concerns of residents, businesses, anyone who has an interest in the city or lives in the city about all forms of traffic, both multimodal, so motorized, bike, walking, bus, mark rail, everything. All right. So our mission, exploring funding sources for the city's traffic and transportation needs, informing, educating the council and the public. And there's a picture of us hard at work in the city hall the other day. We currently have four members. We have Larry, who's our senior member. He's been on the committee the longest, I think, more than any of our current members combined. So we thank him for remaining with us. And we have Matt Amon, Morgan Lake, and myself. We did lose two members in the past year, unfortunately. We thank them for their service. They both decided their commitments and they, you know, had to step away. So we are looking for some new members. I believe we have at least three vacancies. So we are looking for members and our, our great city staff who help us out, Michael Hackman from Long Range Planning, Brian here. And we're often joined by Councilmember Harris. We appreciate that. We meet monthly. So here we are, just outside the charging station, which sometimes does work. And as the other night. All right. So a few topics that we covered in the past year, a few of our achievements, accomplishments. Bike to Work Day is our marquee event every year. It's usually, I think, the third or fourth Friday in May. It's a great time of year for it.
This is the third. I know, because it's always the day before the book festival. And I can never make it for that reason.
Yeah. So it's a great event. We have two what are called pit stops here in the city, which are, you know, just areas where we meet cyclists who are on their way to work or on their way home from work. We provide snacks, you know, giveaways, water. Larry's our DJ. He's been a DJ for a long time, playing music with sound system setup. And the public work staff help us with both those, one in Kentlands in the morning, one here in Old Town in the afternoon. So that's our biggest event by far. We also have worked on a few other plans and topics affecting the city. One is the Old Town to Washington Grove Bicycle Connection. It's a planned shared use path, multimodal connection from right here in Old Town on East Diamond. I mentioned to the Shady Grove Metro Station by way of Washington Grove. That's in the works. I believe we got some grant funding to study that, maybe do preliminary engineering. So I know that's, we did a walk through Old Town very late last year regarding that. We also contributed some input to the city points of interest study for the strategic plan, which Michael's been working on with Rob. We gave a lot of feedback on, you know, just areas that people want to go to in the city, even mundane things like shopping centers are actually pretty big points of interest to get a lot of traffic all day, things like schools, to provide feedback on that. We also had a great briefing this past summer, I believe it was in July, from Montgomery County Department of Transportation. We're joined by Deanna Arche and Joanna Conklin, who walked us through some of MCDOT's plans for the city, mostly involving ride-on bus, but a few other things. Ride-On's currently working on a major redesign. The public comment period for that just closed about a month ago. That's going to bring some pretty significant changes to the city if it gets realized. It's a big if, but they have proposed some pretty significant changes there. There are, in the near term, two new, they're going to be Branda's Ride-On Extra routes. It's part of their kind of great Seneca Transit Corridor Network, so they'll connect to Shady Grove and they'll serve areas like Crown, Rio. In the early stage, they'll serve that part of the city, but there are plans for more lines that will replicate the route of the planned CCT, which has been shelved indefinitely. A couple of things talked about, the Great Seneca Pedestrian Bridge. I know this was before the City Council recently, and there have been discussions about reallocating some of the planned funding for that to other uses to address some troublesome intersections around the city. The committee really supports that. We cross these intersections all the time. We do think that'd be a great use of those funds to kind of do a service spot improvements at these intersections rather than, you know, if, if the bridge is out of the question. And we also were informed and had some input on a few different grants that you've received. I'll say the city staff does a great job of getting us grants. The past year, I know we've scored several, and those are a big help for a city like ours that's debt free. So great work getting the grants. So just some stats on Bike to Work Day and the success of it. We had about 120 people between both pit stops. The morning one tends to be a bit more popular. You know, it is Friday, so I think there's a bit more of a group in the morning because everyone's going to work. The afternoon attendance is slightly lighter, but we had great turnout at both. A lot of people getting engaged, meeting many people who live in the city or commute through it, hearing their thoughts on, on issues, you know, how biking, safety, things like that. Like I said, we hand out giveaways and whatnot, and this, this was an increase compared to 2022. I'm not sure how it compares to, to pre-pandemic, but it did go up from 22, which is, which is nice to see. We also talked about pedestrian improvements. They, like I said, there are a few that are moving forward with the, the bridge being canceled and that getting reallocated. We also have a new shared use path coming up on Quinsey Orchard Boulevard that the committee is very happy to see going ahead, as well as the, the completion of that kind of NIST loop connecting West Diamond there down to Mighty Branch. We're really glad to see that kind of connects, that loop around NIST that is almost complete. And also kind of the Old Town to Washington Grove Bicycle Connection I mentioned earlier. So we also were pleased to see that we got some more bus shelter funding. We'd like to see the number of shelters expanded, get a net gain. But we are glad that the city got, I think, a new vendor to maintain the existing shelters. Many of them were in pretty rough shape. So that's, that's very good news since last year's update that that's been secured. But we are still, you know, doing whatever we can to push for adding more shelters, just all the way over here, you know, passed by several where it's just kind of a flagpole for the stop and maybe some concrete to stand on if that, but no banks, no shelter, no light. So we want to see those improved. Because as I mentioned, Ride-On has many changes coming up and with that increased ridership, that will need that. So a few goals for 2024 is obviously growing the committee. Like I said, we lost two members. We'd like to fill out the committee if at all possible. So if any of you all know people who might be interested, this is our call for recruits. We welcome any recommendations you all have to send our way. Also boosting attendance at Bike to Work Day. Our morning pit stop is near Kentlands. It's Orchard Ridge and Great Seneca, kind of on that grass there, near, near Astro Seneca. We're thinking of moving that into the Main Street Pavilion. We think that'd be a much better way to engage the local businesses. Just, it's obviously, it's a focal point in the community. That's why it was built. We think that'd be a better spot than kind of on the side of a highway, which, we get a lot of attendance there because the cyclists know to go there, but it's loud, it's busy. We think moving it to the Main Street area would be just more conducive. So we're entertaining that option, I believe we have until about a month from now, to get that approved by the council governments who kind of manages the event region wide, but that's something we're looking at doing. And we think that'll help boost attendance. And we also want to see if we could boost attendance here at Old Town. Like I said, it's in the afternoon, so it's a bit of a different dynamic. But that is a great sight out there by the fountain. So we'd like to see, explore some ways to get attendance raised where he's there. We also like to collaborate with the city committees on some other topics. You know, we had environmental, tonight, and economic, both are integral to transportation, goes without saying. So we'd like to do some collaboration with those two committees in the new year, if at all possible. And just continuing to advocate for funding for projects. We have many things we want to see get built, get funded. You have to get money to do it. Like I said, we've had some great success in getting grant funding. We hope that this streak keeps going. I think we're even better than Rockville on that. Yeah, so I just close that. If y'all have any questions, like I said, thank the city staff, you know, the public work staff for a great help at Bike to Work Day, Rob, Michael, Brian, all of them are really great in our meetings, and of course, Councilmember Harris joining us. So I'll take your questions.
Sean, thank you so much for the presentation. Brian, thanks for, for being with us. And as with our, our other committees, we extend our gratitude to your colleagues as well. Yes, the challenge is that we need to help, we need to help recruit some new members for a transportation committee. It's an important committee. You guys are doing good work. I apologize for not ever making it to Bike to Work Day. It's just the worst, it's actually like the worst day, aside from the actual book festival day. It's the second worst day of the year for me to be able to make it to things.
You've got to call it Book to Work Day.
Well, you just a book, yeah, boy.
But it's, 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 it's really, it's important. It's important what you guys are doing, and we, we appreciate it. I'll go to Neil first.
Yeah. So since I was part of the, part of the process of putting this together, I don't have a lot of questions about it.
Wonderful slideshow, isn't it?
Excuse me?
It's a wonderful slideshow.
Yes, wonderful slideshow. It's actually much prettier than the last one I saw. So you've done, you've done some good work in making it accessible. But I, you know, just as an observation, having been the liaison to this committee for a long, long time, it is the, the amount of work and the dynamism of that committee now is night and day from what it used to be. I mean, you guys have really, really brought a lot of the new energy to it. And I'm going to try to twist some arms and see if I can help get, get some more people involved because it's a lot more fun. I think you're the only committee that still meets in person all the time, not hybrid or virtual?
We're transportation, so we have to transport ourselves somewhere.
Okay. You don't want to virtually transport yourself?
We are doing partially virtual in the new year. We do mostly virtual, probably two in person.
Yeah. And one last comment, since we had environmental affairs and transportation, I'm, I'm, I'm very proud to be the new owner of an EV as of today. So I'm doing my part for both committees.
Appreciate that.
Thanks.
All right.
Okay.
Jamil.
Just, um, this may be all for, for y'all, but between environmental and transportation, that shared use path or the path on NIST, I understand it's purvious or parts of, the current one is purvious. So that's a nice, you know, not a lot of people know that. What's, what was Ryan's thing? For the benefit of the, of the public? So I was, I always like telling people about that. On the, do you have any updates? Remember the scooter pilot? I don't know if that was a county or a city, because we saw them all over the place and they disappeared and they came back. Just any thoughts on that?
I know MCDOT administered the pilot. I don't know to what extent the city government had any involvement. I know a lot of scooters ended up here.
Yes.
I think they, they were formally allowed around metro stations, but many of them made their way up here north of Shady Grove Road. But I don't believe the city formally participated in the pilot.
Jim.
Thank you. Actually, that's a really good point and good question, and maybe that is something for the, for the next year is, is looking into the evolution of micro mobility, particularly as we're adding some of these new connections. I know I've brought up from the dais after business travel in a number of cities, most recently, Grand Rapids, Michigan, had a really robust micro mobility program. And it really found it easy to get around the city out there. And, you know, as somebody who cycles regularly, I'm on that NIST path, and it is very nice. Not only is it purvious, but it's a nice, smooth path.
And wide.
Nice and wide. But I do appreciate, I'm a former member of this committee prior to getting elected. And I appreciate the expanded focus that you all have now. So thank you for that. Obviously, public transportation, pedestrian safety. I know Brian and I communicate regularly on things that I see around the city and, you know, encourage the, the committee, you know, to be looking out for those things, as we talked about with Jeanette, you know? If you in the committee see potential, you know, pain points around the city, or, you know, would it be good to, to look at this from a connectivity standpoint, from a pedestrian safety standpoint? I think it, it certainly falls within the purview of, of your committee to, to explore that. And looking at some of the, the new connections that we're going to have, obviously, Lake Forest developing, you know, kind of keeping your eye to the horizon and what are the things that we're going to need? I know, you know, going back to former councilmember Sesma was a big advocate of, of a, a loop among our business centers. And, you know, as we're getting, you know, hopefully, Lake Forest coming back online in the next few years, you know, I think that might be a good opportunity to keep that on our horizon as well with Crown, Rio, and whatnot. I know as somebody who lives as far east in the city as you can without not being in the city, it takes me a good 20 minutes to drive across town. And it takes about 30 minutes to bike across town. So, you know, are there other opportunities, again, through micro mobility or other things, that can improve that access across 270 so that everybody can explore all the different sections of the city more easily?
All things we're looking at, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Lisa.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think I'm going to go very left with this question. So I'll ask for your forgiveness now. So I was at the NLC Conference, National League of Cities, two weeks ago, and one of the. League of Cities, two weeks ago. And one of the items that came up, and I believe it was the state of Virginia, was very interesting to me, that in intersections to monitor crashes and, and, and things, you know, bad things that are happening at intersection, they're no longer relying on monitors or radars at the light pole, I'm gonna get all the words wrong, but the telematics from the cars themselves. So the, the GPS data and the telematics data, because it's easier and faster to, to get that. And it's, and it's a deeper amount of data. Is that something that you guys are hearing about, or?
So that's under the general category of intelligent transportation systems, ITS, which is using real-time data from all sources to optimize traffic operations at signalized intersections. So instead of seeing like a fixed timing, or even rush hour timing, it'll evolve as the demand evolves to make that signal operate more efficiently. That's just one example of how that technology's used. It's not something at the city that we've really gotten into, it's really more at the county level. But it is something, that, that's where the industry's going.
Okay, all right. Thank you. It was interesting that, that I'd seen that, so thank you. I knew you'd know.
I will say, here in the city, MCDOT is, I think they call it the Integrated Traffic Management Center. It's down there at Quince Orchard Boulevard and Quince Orchard Road in that, that building. That's where they, all the traffic lights are kind of run out of there. It's a great place to visit, if you've not been there before. The nine-one-one center's there too, but they have a whole other room that's full of all the, they can talk your heart about traffic signals. And it's, it's very informative, so I recommend visiting it.
We actually.
I'm sorry. I work for the county also. I have, I've been in there for some public safety.
Yeah, it's a great spot, so.
Yeah, we, a few years ago, say a few, maybe eight or ten years ago, there was, they, they invited us, we did an off-site work session where we did a tour of that building, not just traffic management, but the nine-one-one emergency call center as well. Neil?
Yeah, I was just actually gonna jump on that one as well. I, I was at that last tour, so, but it was a long time ago, and we've got some new members on the council and new members on the committee as well. I think maybe we should think about setting up another tour.
Not a bad idea. Great. Is there anybody in the public who would like to comment, or testify, or ask questions? Not seeing anybody jumping up. Okay, let me just check on Zoom. And I am not seeing any particular, oh, Carl, please come on up.
Hi, I'm Carl Van Ness, fifty-two Redingrass Drive, Gaithersburg. Are there any, what thoughts have been given to how autonomous cars may impact traffic patterns, parking, and that sort of thing throughout the city? Thank you.
Thank you, Carl.
I think it'd be a good topic for a meeting. I know from my prior day job that MCDOT does have an autonomous vehicles working group, at least it did a few years ago. I don't know if it's still active, or if they've engaged the municipal governments at all. But I know it's something that's been on the county's radar. I don't know where that stands currently, so. I remember in 2014, hearing that autonomous vehicles are five years away, and there's, they're always five years away, it seems like, to get to full self-driving. A lot of cars can almost do it right now, they just can't get that final two percent. But it's something that's definitely on the horizon. I think eventually we'll see them in more widespread use. So I think that's a great committee topic idea.
Brian, anything you want to add to that?
That's very well said. It's one of those things that, an emerging technology that we are monitoring as a city, but hasn't really filtered down to us yet. It's kind of at the state, the county level, but it will be here in some capacity.
Okay, Neil?
Yeah, just a quick adder. I happen to know that the state has also had a working group at MDOT. The person who was chair of that actually was part of the previous administration, so I'm not sure where the, what the status is currently. But I know they've done a lot of research. As far as I can tell, nobody knows how it really, what it really impact if maybe nobody needs to own a car going forward, the cars just show up at your door when you need it, or the cars are going at a hundred miles an hour because they won't ever crash into each other, so you can make more use of the roads. I mean, there's lots of possibilities. But, but like, like you said, we've been five years away for a long time, and it's, there's some really hard problems to solve that, you know, you can throw, I mean, there's a lot of companies throwing a lot of resources behind it, so we don't know when we get to the five-year mark, if it's, if it's really five years from now or fifty years from now. Hopefully, hopefully by the time my kids want to take my car keys away, that's my goal.
I'll just come to you. It'd be a good topic to discuss, yeah, because eventually, I think they'll, they'll become more widespread.
Yeah. Okay. Carl, Carl, you can't just yell out in one of these meetings. Why don't, please, come on, come back up to the podium. This is the actual real government meeting here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's especially relevant for things like the Lake Forest Mall redevelopment issue, you know, parking, that sort of thing. You know, they're making, they're making great progress. We're seeing things in San Francisco where there are, they are using autonomous cars there. You know, downtown Crown, you know, would, would suddenly there be more streets that we would maybe close off and become streeteries? Those kinds of things are, are very fluid and, and would be changing our landscape considerably.
Understood. Thank you. All right, any, seems like we're, we appreciate your presentation. And I'm told there are no raised hands on Zoom. So, so Sean, thank you very much. Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
And that being our last discussion topic, I will note, I will remind everybody that Winter Lights is going on now, and every night through New Year's Eve, except for, I don't think it goes on on actual Christmas Day. But other than that, any night you want to go to Winter, Winter Lights, but you cannot buy tickets there. You have to buy tickets online in advance. On Saturday, there will be a memorial service of some kind for former late Senator Jenny Forehand. It's happening in Rockville at the courthouse. And there is, there are details out there, but I don't have them yet. But if you're interested, then look out for those details. And then Saturday night, we do, Saturday evening, I should say, we do one of my favorite little cute events that the city does, which is the Jingle Jubilee, where we light the holiday tree and have music and hot chocolate and all the sweet things you would have in kind of a small town at holiday time. It's, it's, it's at six PM. It's right here at City Hall. There will be music at the pavilion, and there will, and there'll be an appearance from Santa for the kids. I'm telling you, if you haven't been, this is the cutest thing, and it's, it's so much fun, and it's, you know, it's a short time, you know. Spend an hour with us, and we'll light the tree together. So, Jingle Jubilee Saturday night. Until next time, we, our next regular meeting is on Monday, December fourth. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.